incredibly spaced out. They did a nice job. How, but I was shocked. They said it was gonna be in person. Shocked when it was in person and then this young much come in. In person, yep, in person.
Hey.
I was shocked.
Like each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll let you keep all your paperwork.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so it's seven oh one, we're gonna open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so July twenty first, twenty twenty one, this is a meeting, a regular meeting of the planning board. I just wanna let everybody know, the Village of Virgin is recording this meeting. It's our first time recording a meeting, so bear with me. I've never done a recorded meeting before. So, just so I can make sure that everyone who may be seeing this video outside of this meeting room, I'm just gonna read the attendance, in case folks can't see who's here. John Zinter is here, Anna Marie Barclay, Peter Salentano, Grace Gallivan, Robin Day, John Lanfair, Kate Milliman, Chris Fay, Gary Cesari, David Burke, Todd Cardio, Carol Walker, Renee Bararo, Edwin L. Ward, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Kelly Marsaki and Barb Zinter. So, those are the people who are in attendance. And before we call the meeting to order, I'm gonna let the mayor say a few words, and then we can carry on with our business.
This will be short. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I just want to publicly thank this group of people, along with Kevin Donovan, who is the liaison from our village board on the committee that worked for the last two years putting together a wonderful document, which is the updated zoning law. Lots of hours, lots of dedication and commitment. Renee, your leadership was amazing. We could not have asked for more from any of you. And I want you to know that, on behalf of the village board, we appreciate everything that you did. So, thank you very, very much. A point of process, there are many protocols and procedures that need to take place when a zoning law is updated and put together. And we followed them to the T as we went through this. One of the pieces is when the committee completes the process, then that document is transferred to the village board. And the village board then takes ownership of that document and then goes on with the process. And that's where we are at this point. Village board has the document and has now taken ownership of the document. And any procedures from here on out take place with the village board. The meeting tonight is for the business of the planning board, and that is on the agenda that you see. I want you to know that the public notice that I'm going to read out loud to you is on the Village of Virgin website, it is on the Village of Virgin Facebook page. It has been emailed to the list of folks who have signed up to receive board minutes on a monthly basis. It is posted on the office window, it's in the library, it's at the post office of the living board. And I understand that it's been put out on several different other social media sites. And this is what these statements says, this is the public notice. The regular planning board meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July twenty first, will be for planning board, board, excuse me, business only. No discussion on the proposed zoning code update will take place at this meeting. We understand from the phone calls, emails, and social media platforms that residents still have concerns with the proposed zoning law. With the number of people who have contacted us with questions, we want to be sure everyone who has public comment has provided the opportunity to be heard in the appropriate form. The proposed zoning law would be a village local law. So, a village board public hearing is the appropriate place to accommodate public comment on the proposed zoning law and the zoning map, not a planning board meeting. A third public hearing for the proposed zoning law and zoning map will be scheduled for August twenty fifth at the State Pavilion, starting at six thirty P M. Copies of the most current draft dated seven one twenty one are available on our website. That's W W W dot Village of Virgin dot com or in the village office. If you are unable to make a public hearing or would prefer to submit your comments ahead of time, we will be accepting written comments through the end of business on Tuesday, August twenty fifth. As with any written comments for a public hearing, they will be read as part of the hearing record. Please include with your comments the article number, section number, and name, subsection, and page number for records. And we look forward to seeing you, everyone. So, thank you.
Alright, so we are gonna call the regular meeting to order. And our first part of business is our meeting minutes from February seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Uh, sorry, April twentieth, twenty twenty one. I know. Barb's keeping me on track. It's, it was a while ago. It feels like a year ago. But we actually saw the signed permits for Ralph and Rosie's, Gregory's, and the American Legion. So, the American Legion got their sign, Gregory's got their sign. It didn't quite work out with Ralph and Rosie's, but maybe down the road. Those are up. If anybody has seen them, they look fantastic. Both the Legion and Gregory's was thrilled with them. So, I thought they turned out fantastic also. That's, that, we covered a little of the zoning code, proposed zoning code update. Ten articles, ten per sixteen. And our training hours are on the back as of April. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, second? Done? All in favor? Hi, okay. Barb has summariously put together a new training for all of us. So, if anyone wants.
Barb.
If, if anyone wants to borrow some of Barb's training hours.
Yes, yes.
So, lots of training opportunities. Barb is like the guru of training. She knows where to find the training on the sites. All planning board members and zoning board appeals members are required four hours of training. A lot of them, they'll do the webinar and then they'll put them on the website. You can go back and look and, and whatnot, do them later, if you let us know. I believe the, also the village board has a resolution or motion that if you complete your four hours of training, it will be as such that you attended a meeting. So, that is really a nice kind of incentive to get our trainings done. So, yeah, it looks like Barb's good till, I don't know, twenty something.
Overachiever.
Right? Alright. So, our new business, so we have, we're in the preliminary stages with Elvamar? Elvamar Healthy Foods, am I saying that right?
Yes.
They are here to do a preliminary site plan review and look over a special use permit, get the feedback from the planning board. We have comments, they're gonna discuss what they're doing over there. And then the planning board can decide if we wanna send it on to the county and have a public hearing at our next board meeting if we feel that we wanna proceed in that manner. So, Eddie and Kelly are here. I don't know where you wanna talk, you wanna talk from there?
We can talk from here, probably. I think everybody can hear me okay, right?
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Our plan is, we're gonna have, it's gonna be, it's actually down on the corner there. It used to be the old insurance, it was the old insurance building.
Twelve South Lake, Southside Business.
Twelve, yep. And we're planning on selling healthy foods. So, it's gonna be dried snacks, we're gonna do, we're gonna do fruit and, and vegetables and different, like healthy snack foods, similar, like you have those apple chips that you can get at the store, it'd be similar to those, stuff like that, similar to that. And just a lot of, this is a great area to be in, and like, I hope everything can, can go as planned. Be, it's gonna be a couple, it's gonna take a couple months. And I put it on the notes there for construction, to get things ready. And we're hoping to be open as soon as we get everything set up and everything approved and, and running. So, there's some, there's some construction, just to take some time, once we get the business set up. It's gonna take some time to do that. Estimated time would be two to three months, I put that on the notes, with anything as well, so.
Where did you say this is gonna be again?
It'll be down, down twelfth, South Lake.
And, yeah, and then.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Twelve, yeah.
Where the Mason's Building is and.
It's up here.
Next to the log.
The round floor.
When I talked to Eddie about this, when they came in, he, they're gonna do a phased approach, is that still the plan?
Yes.
So, the phased approach is that they'll be doing packaging, kind of, we, we have to decide for sure, but there'll be warehousing and then shipping out? And then they will phase in the retail portion, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, when I'm, uh, there's one, so I'm, I'm new to Virgin and the codes and everything. And I know there's, uh, if there's any questions I have, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, if it was mentioned. But right now, as we're planning, what zoning law would, would, should we follow as far as?
You're in the current zoning law, not the proposed, yeah.
Okay.
So, we're gonna have to make a couple adjustments. We, Eddie came in before the vote on the proposed zoning law took place, so we didn't know where to put him. I've talked to Eddie, actually, we discussed it on the phone earlier this week. Currently, it has the zoning district as a village center commercial, but it is in the C two central commercial district, so we would look at that piece in the zoning law. In addition, it looks to be a special use that's permitted as a warehouse, since the retail piece is not going to be moving forward right away down the road. I encouraged him to give us the full picture, so that he could only come once. If it's a phased in approach, then down the road, the retail will open. That way, they don't have to come back for yet another permit, you know, we want you to get your business started. So, so I'll have you make, I'll have you make those changes on the original.
Yeah, I never made it down that one day, it was ending up broken, probably, it was like late, late o'clock that night, I never made it in. And then, is there anything I should do right now, just, there was, so what I did is I followed the, the draft that was provided, but then I didn't realize that, you know, that these, uh, the draft.
Yeah, the, the site plan review and the special use permitting process is almost the same.
Okay.
The only difference would be, you and I discussed maybe a minor site plan, but that's not applicable in the current zoning law.
Okay.
So, it would just be a site plan and then a special use permit. It's very straightforward on these applications, so really, it's minimal changes, just the actual zoning district.
Okay.
And the permitted use. The artisan manufacturing, which would have fit nicely into what you guys were doing, is not even a use in, in the current zoning law. So, when I looked, I mean, they, we can look and see is a planning board, but the warehouse seemed to fit into the criteria of what they are doing now. It's not retail yet, it's not in office, it's not any number of things. But it did seem to fit the warehouse, and I think Eddie agreed with me on that.
Yep.
So, that is a special use permit, which would require a public hearing, any special use permit, so. Does it, does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I'm just curious, you said dried snacks, veggies and food needs. Is it just gonna be that, or is it gonna be other foods too?
There'll be other foods too.
Like?
There's, there's, we're still like, we're still growing, so we're definitely gonna have strawberries, definitely gonna have bananas, dried bananas, and it's not your normal, it's a different style of dried banana.
Right.
That you can't really get at the stores, because they're not available. So, we're focusing on, on, um, just foods that, that didn't have preservatives, no, like, no added sugars, all natural sugars. We may, we don't know, like, very, has a longer shelf life than, than normal foods.
But besides the fruits and veggies, are there other, other types of food that you will eventually be doing?
No, it's actually, we're, it's especially mostly just dry food.
Okay. And are you processing them yourself, or are you just, are you getting them dried and repackaging?
We're, we're processing them.
Or you're, you're processing?
Start to finish.
So, start to finish, so, so the building with your, you know, what you're proposing and that, you will have all the equipment there to, like, say to dry?
Yes.
The fruits and vegetables?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that in mind, what kind of, because of course, we have the canning factory, and unfortunately, from time to time, there's things that go awry, but are taken care. So, what, it, are there, would there be any odor transmissions that?
There's no odor, it's actually the self-contained, the self-contained units, it's a, it's a newer technology, so there, there's no, there's no heat, no exhaust, no chemicals or anything else.
Alright, thank you.
And they're all electric too, if anybody's wondering, we're not gonna have the hood, there's maybe no exhaust fans. It's all electric, internal and self-contained, it's similar to, like, if you, um, there's no, um, if there are, it's gonna be pleasant, or just, you'll smell the fruit.
So, so, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, basically with the layout of the building from, you know, other, other, um, things in there over the years.
Yeah.
So, is it safe to assume that the processing would probably be in the back, and then eventually the retail would be in front?
Correct, yes.
So, you would actually have some.
And that wouldn't have been perfect too, because you could see it from the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from everybody?
Sure, yeah, it's exciting to hear this coming, and we do live in a food desert here, so any sort of a food store is always welcome. So, I assume it's more gonna be like freeze drying than anything else?
Yes, mostly, mostly the freeze drying, I mean, that was on the plan. Yeah, it's just a, it's, it's great, because you can use that, you don't need to add all the extra sugars and preserves and all the other stuff that's usually put in the food at the, at the grocery store.
Oh, that's great. I mean, the follow-up on that though is, I mean, I know it's sort of a niche business that you, it looks like you're having. Have you thought of, uh, put any thought into having some conveniences? Just because this is a food desert, being able to quickly pick up, you know, a dozen eggs or, you know, half a gallon of milk is something important that we seem to be lacking here.
Yeah.
And, you know, gas stations don't always have the highest quality items that are, you know, really in date or have much of an expiration left. So, I mean, I would just, and, you know, I'm not asking for an answer right now or anything, but maybe something to consider.
We, we can consider that. I don't know about the, the dairy, because the, the area, the space in there is, it's, it's, it's large enough to do what we have, but if we wanted to do additional, and we have every inch of that area, we have mapped out. But if we have anything else like that, if it was milk or eggs, then it would cut into some of the other areas. So, we're just gonna stick with what we, what we know, or what we, we're hoping will work. And if we do wanna go in the future, that's something we can discuss probably, um, too.
Oh, sure.
Either way, it's still. I hear, yeah.
Yeah, still great to hear that.
Yeah, great.
So, they have four freeze dryers on the site plan and three freezers. Do you, do you have to get a, what type of permitting do you need from the health department?
So, a health department, it would be, Kelly knows more about this.
It's actually the agriculture, agro, the agro, it's not health department, doesn't do it.
Oh, it doesn't, so it's ag, yeah, okay.
There's two, two instructors out here.
Yeah, two.
So, then you'll be taking deliveries and whatnot of fruits and things, is that how it works?
You're right, I never, people can do, oh, you mean like, for the product company, yeah.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna use the other, um, next to Mike's gym there, there's a driveway. All the deliveries, we're planning on having come in that back door, because I don't wanna, we can't, it's be difficult to do that from the front. Part of the road, and it would take up, it would just be in the way, so we're gonna do all that on the side, on the back there.
Will that be marked some way, so that people understand that there's gonna be deliveries coming in and out of there? It's kind of a heavily trafficked pedestrian area.
We can.
I mean, I, I think that would be a good idea. I just see how many people walk up and down that street, I mean, on any given day. Just if they're backing out a lot, so, just so people are aware that there's going to be deliveries.
What's great about that though is it's, it's, since we have the freezers, we'll take all the deliveries probably on one day.
Oh, that's fantastic.
A couple days, it's not gonna be like every day, it'll be.
Oh, perfect.
It'll be limited.
And then shipping out, same thing?
Shipping out will actually, same thing, and that would be probably myself or, or one of our employees that would have a truck and a trailer, so we wouldn't be going through.
We're gonna try to do it ourselves.
Oh, okay, so not like UPS or FedEx or anything?
They might for some supplies, but a lot of it, there's another location, we're gonna have them to take it, but they're gonna, they're gonna, a lot of the stuff's be shipped there first, they won't bring it out. So, don't have these big tractor trailers picking up space on the road or anything. And a lot of it, they, they won't be able to put it in there anyways, that area.
Yeah, great.
Do you have a timeline, anticipated timeline for when you move into the retail component?
Whenever we have, whenever we can get in there, and if, if this is approved, it would probably be three to, three to three months from that, from that time, because there's still a lot of stuff involved. So, I'm hoping everything goes well, we'll, we'll be in there soon.
For the warehousing and the, in the processing, but for the retail end of it, like, within that space, that's gonna be what's on, right?
So, that, that, um, it's really hard to tell, because it's, um, we have to see how the market, market is and how things sell. If we're gonna be in there eight hours, we're only gonna get one or two customers, then it's, that, that might make a difference. But once we get enough customer base, then we can build it up and prepare. It would make, if it, if it makes sense financially to have an, have an employee in there all day. But it's one of those things that you can't, going in, try to give a direct answer, just until you, we see how that, how that part goes.
So.
I hope that answers your question.
Will you be dealing with just seasonal produce thing, or other things throughout the year?
It'll be other things throughout the year, and we had, for example, we're some, you know, forgetting straw, let's say, for example, strawberries, you can get those from California, or we just had, we had some Calif, uh, different areas around the country.
And as you begin to start with retail, just something I was thinking about is, there's an extreme lack of parking. We do have some public lots.
Okay.
But had there been any thought put into, I don't know if there's any sort of a traffic study that's required or anything like that, to see what impact having, you know, a business occurring in that building does to the traffic and parking patterns here?
I think, has that done that, what, Genesee County has them approved?
No, it's not required at this point. The planning board would have to determine whether they feel the municipal lot is not sufficient, but we have done, when a lot of the businesses came down here, we did an entire analysis of how many spots were in the back, how many spots were across the street, and how many spots were down here, especially based on the apartment, the mixed uses. The apartment folks are gone during the day when the retails are open, which makes it really nice that you can basically have shared parking. There was enough to accommodate all the businesses down here.
Okay, cool.
And if, if it ever does become a problem, and it would be great if it did, I guess, not, not the parking, but we can, we would do house deliveries for locally, we would do something like that.
Oh, that's awesome.
If it was a problem.
I mean, it'd be a great problem to have, I suppose.
It would be a great problem, but yeah, we would, we would figure out a better way to do that, so.
Sure.
Kind of like Topps, you know, drop your groceries off, or there's another place, I think it's the carton home.
Oh, yeah.
But we would do that locally, and the, you know, probably, we'd ship it if it's for.
We're honestly even crab hook.
Something like that, those are different ideas, it's just, it's still starting, so we'll see how.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody else have any questions?
So, you're gonna have four employees to start with?
Um, not off, not off the bat, we, we, that's our goal, but we'll, we'll, um, it's, it's truly, planning any business is, is, can be difficult, I guess. You have to see how the, you know, um.
Who's the other?
To get started, we'll see how fast it grows, and if it grows fast, then definitely, but we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Who, who are we gonna be selling to, like locals, private, natural food stores, stuff like?
Hopefully local, um, and, um, and I hope that this would bring help, you know, um, maybe bring some more Carista to Virgin, there's not too much, not too many places that, that I know that, that are on that, that just sells specifically dry food.
I love it, I think it's a great idea. We're so excited to see businesses going into these downtown stores, for sure. As you guys were talking, as you were talking, Eddie, about the retail part, I got thinking about the CSA for the Regent Lake Farm. That would be a great idea, to do a CSA for all of your package, like, this is what you, we're gonna put it together for you and get people into the building and get them excited, and maybe that's a way to encourage your retail piece to get going. I mean, there's so many different avenues you guys could take, that's awesome, we're very excited. Does anyone have any more questions, or Eddie and Kelly? Alright, um, so, the next piece of business is, we can send this on to the Genesee County Planning Board for referral. They, we have a deadline of August fifth to be seen at their August twelfth meeting. Do I have a motion to send it to the county for referral? Kate, second? David, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You weren't quick enough to. Okay, so, great, so I'll get that sent over to the county, that will be seen at the August second meeting, they are in person now. I'm sure you'll hear from, what, oh, sorry, yeah, twelfth, sorry.
August twelfth, right.
It goes the fifth, we have to get it over there the fifth, being seen on the twelfth. It is in person, I'm sure you'll get something from Felipe Ultramarri, who is the director over there. I will get something, you will get something, we'll get the same thing, okay? I do not know what time the meetings are.
Okay.
Six thirty perhaps?
Is there a website?
Uh, yes, yes.
Where would I find that?
Uh, Genesee County Planning Board.
Okay.
If you just Google that, it'll come up.
Okay, thank you.
And then what, you said you gotta do a public hearing?
Yes, so, my next motion is to have a public hearing to hear the special use permit and the site plan for, um, I forget the name of your business already.
It's Elvamar.
Elvamar Healthy Foods, I'll get it. Elvamar Healthy Foods on August eighteenth at the regular planning board meeting at seven P M. Carol?
Sure.
Second? Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, fantastic, very excited about this.
Yeah, it was Kate and then David.
The fifth is on the agenda.
Yes.
It doesn't have the, it has the dates, but not the time.
I can let you know.
Website?
I can let you know. If you guys just stay after for just a couple minutes, I'm just gonna have you make a few small adjustments that we already discussed on these two originals, and then I will send that on to the Genesee County.
Perfect, thank you.
So. Alright, that concludes our new business. We don't have any old business, privilege of the floor. Grace?
I would like to say something. I haven't been to a planning board meeting in years, and I really wanted to attend this one, because I specifically wanted to thank all of you for your time to us, and let you know how much it truly is appreciated, and that, I would hope, not that I would hope, I know you will keep up the dedication and the good work, and do what is right for all of the people in the village. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Grace, thank you. Alright, it is seven twenty-eight, do I have a motion to adjourn? Kate?
Aye.
Aye.
Carol? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, our next meeting will be August eighteenth at seven o'clock. We will have a public hearing to see Elvamar Healthy Foods' special use permit and site plan.
It'll be here, seven o'clock.
It'll be here, seven o'clock. Alright. Seven o'clock.
I show up at odd times.
At least you showed up.
She's a chair. I didn't think it'd be a chair.
Yeah, thank you all for coming. Yeah, thank you all for coming.
There's not many things I know, so.